We'll call a roll, please.
Council members Anderson?
Here.
Benninga?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Costello?
Here.
Jameson?
Here.
Litt?
Here.
Staggers?
Present.
Quorum present tonight. Tonight we'll ask everyone to please rise and have a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this afternoon's meeting is a special council meeting to reconsider a veto that we have, so we have item number one.
A resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2009.
And as we move forward, could I get a motion to override the veto so we can, for discussion purposes?
So move, Benninga.
Benninga moves in her second.
Second, Costello.
Costello seconded, okay. With that, Gerald, you know, I see there are people here that I'm assuming would like to address the council on the override, and so what we'd ask you to do when we get ready, Gerald gets the floor first, so we will do that, and then if there's any questions, and then if anybody that's out there wants to address the council. I just ask you though, since this decision of the chair, that you try to hold it to five minutes, because normally we just, the council takes it up themselves, but I'd let you people talk if you want to talk, so with that, Gerald, go ahead.
The reason I brought this back in a resolution is that we'd had a review, if you will, by the subsidy committee to discontinue a number of programs in the community that were nonprofit programs, and whether the government supports it through the city funding, or whether it's done by a nonprofit, the most important part of that is if it's done efficiently and effectively, and if it does meet the needs of the community, and the mayor, and the city councils' recommendations for their objectives and goals. To me, the five individuals who showed up at a special meeting to address their concerns about losing funding of these programs is extremely important. We talked about the needs of the Glory House to provide an alternative program for incarcerated, or a halfway house program. We have transportation of volunteers, volunteers recruitment, and volunteer rides that will get federal matches if in fact the city continues to support these groups, and also an affordable childcare program, which is an economic development individual piece by itself. You know, all of these programs do not total a significant dollar amount, but they make a huge impact on the volunteers, the quality of life that we have in this community, and frankly, provide a benefit to us all, and then, and the bottom line is, in some cases, they reduce government spending, because if they weren't doing this, we would have to find a way to do it ourselves. And they can do it less expensive than we can do it. I will not get on my soapbox and talk about each individual one, but I would like to ask that each of them come up for a few minutes and talk about what their programs mean. I also have to say that after receiving the spreadsheet that we all have in front of us, I have some questions and some concerns that I'd like to bring up at the end. You know, we have some organizations that receive substantial increases, and others that were cut altogether, and we also refused all new requests, which I certainly understand. We all need to be fiscally responsible, but I think that if we look at the impact on what this does to our community, and the cost that it'll ultimately be burdened by the taxpayers, I think we need to reconsider this. So I'd like the opportunity, if we could, Mayor, to ask those individuals to come forward. I respectfully hope that the process can be smooth and not be real difficult, but I also think that the five people, five organizations who put the extra effort into this show that how much this really means to those organizations to be able to continue programs and services for this community's benefit. So with that, subs-
If you come forward, we'd just ask, give your name and your address, please. Go, sir.
Good evening. My name is Hal Perry. I live at 1021 Newport Place in Sioux Falls, and I am the Development Coordinator for the Glory House. And again, I come before you this evening to talk about the loss of the funding that the Glory House will experience in 2009, which amounts to about $8,000. Every year, the Glory House has submitted a grant request to the city for $12,000. Usually, we get right around $8,000, and with that $8,000, we are able to take into our program seven to eight individuals on an annual basis, who are basically indigent and would not be able to participate in our program if we don't have the funds from the city. The big thing that I think is important about the money that we get from the city is that it's actually a money-making proposition for the city. The city doesn't lose a dime. When they give us $8,000, they get back more than they give us. And now, some of that money granted goes actually to Minnehaha County, because those eight individuals that come to the Glory House, because they're indigent, and they've had problems in the past, if they didn't come to the Glory House, they would end up in the county jail. And after talking to Sue Roust, I know that it's $78 a day to be in the county jail. We can take those same individuals, house them in the Glory House for a period of 90 days, as opposed to being 90 days in the county jail. Now, what happens with these individuals is that within two weeks of arrival, they're required to find full-time employment. They become productive, tax-paying citizens in the community of Sioux Falls, and the money that they make on an annual basis, the sales tax alone is more than we get from the city, and that's not counting the $50,000 to $60,000 that's saved at the county level, because these people aren't incarcerated for that same 90-day period. One of the things that I did after coming to you the last time, that I didn't talk about when I was here the first time, was that I looked up what the residents of the Glory House make on an annual basis and contribute in taxes to the city of Sioux Falls. And it was interesting to find out that last year, the residents in our facility earned and paid taxes in this community on in excess of a million dollars. And the reason I know that is that they paid $264,000 toward their own stay while they were in our facility, and that represents 25% of their gross income. We meet the needs of the community and have been doing it for 40 years. It's a situation where the money that you give us puts money in not only the city coffers, but the county too, and these people do become positive, productive, tax-paying citizens. We have a 68% success ratio. That means that 68% of the people that come to us and complete the program do become positive, productive, tax-paying citizens, and they never reoffend again. And the reason I know that is, again, I had an intern from SDSU who went back over a five-year period and did a survey on over 1,000 residents, and those are the numbers and the statistics that we use, is a 68% success ratio. I gladly answer any questions that anybody has. I don't want to belabor this. I was here before and talked about a lot of these same numbers, so most of you are aware of the situation, but Representative Staggers was the only one that really asked me any questions last time, which was kind of surprising.
Any questions of Hal? No, thank you very much. All right, others?
I'm Karen Sogas. I'm with Youth Enrichment Services, and the address is 824 East 14th Street. And we talked before about the fact that my organization serves about 1,400 children on a daily basis, and so I think the economic support that that provides to the community, it speaks for itself. I am concerned about the process of this whole allocation, and what has become increasingly more clear to me was a flawed process, probably from the beginning. And I recognize that the program evolved over many years, and years before any of us were even here, and yet we're left to deal with the ramifications of it. I would say that communication has been vague regarding the criteria along the way. I think had my organization been more clear about how this process was to work, we could have better articulated how we match up with the mayor's initiatives. However, it wasn't very clear. It was very vague along the way, and so we didn't articulate that very successfully at the time. However, when I came back and made that appeal, it certainly made the case that our organization was similar to those that were funded, and were providing services for at-risk children in our community. There was also, as I reviewed tapes, a lot of concern about the fairness of the process, and I understand and recognize that it was inherently unfair and set up that way from the get-go, and yet to unwind it now, or continue to perpetuate that, would be a mistake as well. In visiting with one member, we talked about the fact that other nonprofits were not allowed to participate in this process, and I recognized that, and that's one of the flaws to this process. However, to select out, based on a vague criteria, those who would continue to participate, I think perpetuates that unfairness. Should be an all-or-nothing deal. We should have a level playing field with which we are fully prepared to play. Our organization, as I said, did match one of the mayor's initiatives, which was after-school programming, and I think that we've shared how important that is to about 45 children, ultimately, at Wesley United Methodist Church, whose program is in jeopardy without that funding. We stepped up and said we would provide half of it to make that program possible, and would be still willing to do that. And then I want to just end by saying that three times in the last 13 months in our community, my organization has stepped up and been there to assist families in a time which is a crisis for them, the most recent of which was this last weekend, as a childcare center known as Teddy Bear Junction, which is licensed for about 100 children, gave families no notice. On Saturday afternoon, they told the families they would not be open on Monday morning. We had gotten wind of that, and our staff were there over the weekend, figuring out how we could provide assistance to those families and make sure that they had care so that they could continue to be at work on Monday morning. Prior to that, we did that for Apple Tree, as they closed two of their childcare centers, a nonprofit in our community, and then previous to that, we did the same thing for Busy Bee's Childcare Center. Part of enabling our organization to rise to that occasion is our strength, and our fiscal and financial strength is part of that. If we have to take resources and allocate it in other areas, we have less to be able to do that. So it's a trickle-down effect, in other words. I'm hopeful that this funding will be reinstated. It's important to my organization, but more importantly, it's important to the children that we're serving, and the families in the community who are trying to work as well. Thank you.
Questions?
Karen, I just want to make sure that I understand that the monies that would be reduced would be used for low-income and at-risk childcare, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? No, thank you. Others that wish to address the council? Name and address, please.
My name is Ron Dorstman, and I live at 104 North LaSalle Circle here in Sioux Falls. I'm the chairperson for the after-school program at Wesley United Methodist Church, and I just wanted to express how our program works. Our pastor was here a few weeks ago at this meeting and explained that we work with Terry Redlin School for at-risk kids that are recommended to us by Terry Redlin. These kids are either going home to a less-than-safe environment after school, or going home alone, and they also have challenges within, when they go to school. And we have never refused any child that Terry Redlin has sent to us. Our program is approximately six years old, but only last year did we realize that we needed to be licensed. And in order to be licensed, we had to go through a lot of hoops, as you can imagine, and Youth Enrichment Services became our partner in all of that. We have approximately 15 volunteers that work with these kids. They take turns each week to work with the kids that come to our program. So our program operates on a very low budget, but we do have to have a paid staff, and that paid staff has, last year, was paid by Youth Enrichment, and we very much need that to continue to operate. We affect, as a low, we've had about 25 students; at a high, we can handle 45. We work with very difficult situations for most of these kids, so we are affecting youth that need to be nurtured and cared for. And if you were to speak to any of the teachers that Terry Redlin, who are involved in our program, they will tell you that the children that they have recommended to us, their grades have improved, their behaviors improved, and overall, we've made a very positive impact on them. So I think our program, because we have 15 volunteers compared to one paid staff person, or possibly even two, if we were so fortunate to have that kind of money, makes a big impact in this community, and I just ask that you reconsider, because we would be a recipient of Youth Enrichment Services if this thing was-
Thank you. Questions? Ken?
Ron?
Yes.
I believe I read recently in the paper that the organization, the youth care there, had won several awards.
Yes, we have.
Are you familiar with those?
Yes, and I apologize, I can't remember the name of the award right now, but we were listed as, by this large organization, and we were recipient, the only recipient in Sioux Falls for that reward, so. I'm sorry, I can't tell you the name of it.
That's fine.
Other questions? No, thank you. Others that wish to address the council on item number one?
Frank Hansen, 4112 South Birtwood Avenue, Sioux Falls. I represent Project Car, and I think last time we covered a lot of the duties that we do, a lot of the rides that we give and so forth, so I won't get into a lot of that, but does anyone have any idea of how many rides Project Car did in one year last year? Would it be 5,000, 10,000? It's actually 13,584 rides that we gave out. This was for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, and the Senior Companion Program, plus seven other churches involved for Sundays and so forth, that we also go down, but that was just a couple of figures. Again, talking about volunteers and so forth, we're basically made up of volunteer drivers. We do have one paid supervisor, the overall supervisor of the program, Kate Hellegast, who is here today, and two part-times, a part-time maintenance person, and it's really less than part-time, maybe like a fifth or so, and then one part-time secretary in the office. So we have, with all the volunteers, counting the drivers, and people that help with our fundraisers, we have over 100 people involved. We are currently working with the city transportation department to consolidate driving, and some of you are probably familiar with that, trying to make a better use of all the vehicles in the city, and from what I understand, our cost per ride is much better than any of the other programs that the city has, mainly because we have so many volunteer drivers. In fact, they're all volunteers. Nobody gets anything for that. It's something that we, looking towards the future, to consolidating better with the city, getting some of those other organizations to work with us, and keep that cost down where it should be. So I feel that we are really doing something for the city and saving them a large amount of money for a lot of the rides that we do and so forth. I can personally say, and I'm not going to drag this out, but I had a sister that was in the Senior Companion Program that was able to stay in her home for an extra three or four years, because of people coming to visit her via the rides of our program. And I think this means a lot. People being able to stay in their homes longer means that they're going to be able to pay their tax bills, and are going to be happier, are going to keep less people out of the retirement homes. Are there any questions?
Questions of Frank? Ken?
Sir?
Yes.
With, without this service, how many of the people that you serve would actually, in your opinion, qualify for our paratransit unit?
Kate, you probably would have a better thought on that than I would. She's our manager.
Kate Hellegast, 2108 South Stephan. I am manager of Project Car. To answer your question, the current transportation system, Sioux Falls Transit, does not work for these people to get to their volunteer jobs. So although they may qualify at a personal level to use paratransit, say for some, some of our riders would, to qualify for a ride, say, to some personal transportation, they wouldn't for their volunteer efforts, for the senior companions, and for the RSVP volunteers. So paratransit doesn't work for them for that, and Sioux Falls Transit doesn't go to many of the places where we serve. Okay?
Other questions? No, thank you. Others that wish to address the council, item number one?
Hi, I'm Kristin Fox with the Senior Companion Program. The office address is 1,000 Northwest Avenue, Suite 260. First of all, I just wish to thank Mr. Benninga for his efforts in overriding the veto. The Senior Companions, it's a program where we have senior volunteers that go into the homes of more frail seniors to help them remain independent and living in their own homes. We have shown through statistics that our companions, that 76% of our clients that we serve, for six or more months, can stay independently and living in their own homes versus moving into assisted living or nursing homes. And once that happens, you lose the tax revenue, the sales tax. Our program has served the citizens of this community for 30 years. Our federal grant does require matching funds, and that support we receive through local and county government, and I for one would like to see that continue.
Questions of Ruth? No, thank you very much. Others that wish to address the council?
Jessica Walters, Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Our office address is 1,000 Northwest Avenue, Suite 260. I too would also like to thank Councilman Benninga for his efforts. I truly appreciate it, and I just want to, I guess I came before, and I appealed the financial side, and I showed you the money that we're saving, the city of Sioux Falls, and now I kind of just want to appeal to you on the other side, in that our program, and Mayor Munson was there on Saturday, and 75% of the people honored for the President's Award on Saturday were retired and senior volunteer program volunteers, and that's over 4,000 hours of volunteering in their lifetime. And I think that's a great accomplishment to have 75% of the people honored there to be a member of our organization. And these people are volunteering in the schools, from Joel Green, who visits eight schools five days a week, and he reads to the kids, and he tutors them, and he's even started developing his own programs. One month, he talked about the presidents, and, you know, he brought an educational aspect to that, to the other volunteers who are helping down at the Washington Pavilion, or the Siouxland Libraries, or Vera McKinnon, or Sanford Health. Our volunteers are everywhere in Sioux Falls. I mean, I would say 70% of our volunteers are just in the city alone, from the four counties that we, that we serve, and, you know, they're in many walks of life. And our program allows 55 and older retirees or working part-time to stay more alert. It gets them out there, and it socializes them, and the funding from the city helps us do that, and it, you know, it helps us be able to provide Project Car to those who are unable to, to drive, or just can't afford to drive, to those volunteer opportunities. And although it may seem small in the grand scheme of things, you know, it's, it's big in, in those volunteers' lives, and they really look forward to those opportunities, and they love serving their city, and I would just hate for this funding to go to the wayside and for us to have to cut back on being able to provide them the most opportunity that we can, so. Thank you very much.
Questions? No, thank you very much. Others that wish to address the council on item number one?
My name is Nathan Stallings. I'm representing South Dakota, South Dakota chief. Address is 4100 Southwestern Avenue. The money that is, is used for the particular program is a Supported Employment and Supported Living Program. In that program, 293 adults with developmental disabilities participate. With, with the cutting funding, that program will not be able to continue at the level it is. It will be a reduction of the staff person, meaning the independence that people have living in their own apartments, or the AD current employers throughout the city of Sioux Falls that that program works with, will not have the staff support to assist those adults to continue with that goal.
Thank you. Questions? Others?
My name is Stephen Ellen-Brendy, and I live at 1602 East Iris Place, South Dakota, and I'm the president of the Homeless Advocates of South Dakota. Yeah, I kind of noticed there's a few items here on the list that I've made because of the other people here, that, nonprofit groups, and I see no problems that they should get those fundings to help them out with their programs. The homeless advocates will keep close eye on their progress and that, to check, see if things going okay. The homeless advocates will back you up, because I see that that is a good, programs that they're helping out others. I'm getting up there in age, I might need their help. Everybody else, no jobs secured. Yes, true, taxpayers does have to pay for those who sit in jail. I'm a taxpayer, you're all a taxpayer. Yes, they will be sitting behind jails, some of them, without the Glory House. But the Glory House, it helps out the taxpayers. Save them a little bit of money on the side where they don't have to dig in their pockets to pay for the, for them to sit in jail. The taxpayers will pay for that, and we're all taxpayers, we all have to pay. With Glory House, it helps out a lot. Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you very much, Steve.
You're welcome.
Others that wish to address the council this time? Okay, I see no one coming forward, so we will move back to the motion that's made. The motion is to override the veto.
I just have a couple of questions. One of my concerns in this whole process, to be frank-
One of my concerns in this whole process, to be frank, is when I go through the whole application process from beginning to end, at no place do I see any criteria that mentions that the application should be based on the mayor's initiatives or the council's goals and objectives. We talk about that after the process is complete and the applications are done. So people submitted applications to us that frankly were fuzzy at best, and vague, I think has been used in other terms, and I would agree with that. I do understand that the committee that was put together certainly had some tough decisions to make, and we always have tough decisions to make here at the council. But I also think that I have a, I know I have a concern about one agency who requested fifteen thousand and got four-hundred-and-thirty-six percent increase. I have a real concern and problem with that. The other issue for me is, is that we could fund all of the agencies if we needed to based on just that particular increase for one agency. So that's an issue that I have to bring to everyone's attention, and you see it on the spreadsheet. The other concern I have is that the city has some responsibility to be able to use their funds to leverage federal monies to be able to get federal grants for these agencies who will make it work nine or ten times more than what we contribute to their pocketbook, if you will. My other concern, without question, is, is we always talk about the growth and efficiency of government. Well, we're using hundreds and thousands of hours of volunteer time, giving them rides, providing them some transportation, which is, of course, one of the most cost-effective things that we talk about, but haven't been able to reduce. We give them volunteer rides, we bring them to these positions, they provide hundreds and hundreds of hours to the tune of, if I just used a minimum of what I've heard so far, is well over a half a million dollars in salaries that we would be able to save or we would have to spend if, in fact, we didn't have the volunteers doing this. I do not see in this process, frankly, the criteria that needs to be addressed, the priorities that the council has, and we need to consider each one of these things as a quality of life issue that I think meets the mayor's initiative, meets the council's initiatives, their goals and objectives. And for the phase-out program that I talked about, which in some cases I'd probably reconsider and leave it in there completely, the phase-out program that I talked about costs the city very, very little money for huge, huge return on investment. So I would encourage you to support overriding the mayor's veto to process the applications as requested. Thank you.
Further comments?
I have a question for Councilman Benega. Gerald, your proposed changes really amount to less than twenty-five thousand dollars?
Actually, they were incorrectly posted on the original dollar amount. They came, they come to twenty-seven thousand, two sixty-six. One of the agencies was left off, unfortunately.
Yeah, I thought there was another. I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, really, this is probably less than a rounding error on the entire scope of things. And I know it's probably been, or could be perceived as unfair, because there was a list of other agencies that didn't have an opportunity to come forth again, but, you know, we can always address those later down the road. We can see where we end up with our two thousand and eight budget and perhaps come up with a supplemental appropriations on some of those, but we can certainly take care of these viable organizations for a very little amount of money.
Further questions?
I don't disagree that some of the criteria have been not as clear as what some people would want, including myself. For me, the overriding issue goes beyond just the thirty-two that I've made requests over the years. I did a check, there are over two hundred nonprofits in the Sioux Falls area. These thirty-two have been part of an exclusive pipeline that have had the opportunity to make the request through the years. From a fairness perspective, my concern is for those eighty-four percent of the nonprofits in the area that haven't ever had this opportunity to demonstrate their case and say that they also deserve city funding. Some of them, just off the top of my head, that I thought of that do, you all do incredible work, that's the hard part. How do we say no? But some of them that aren't on the list and have never been on the list, to my knowledge, are places like The Bank with, with Project SOS and their feeding program, The Good Shepherd Center, Children's Home Society, Children's Voice, the Homeless Coalition, Children's Care Hospital and School. And therein becomes the difficulty in deciding, how do we decide which groups get and which eighty-four percent don't even get the chance to apply for this funding mechanism? That's the hard part. You all do great work. I support every one of you, but overall, we have to make sure that we're fair to all nonprofits that also do great work in the community.
Further comments?
Yes, I do have a question about how we're going to proceed. Is that, should I ask it this time? It says here that we're going to be voting on a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nine. So we're adopting this resolution for minus the twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six, is that right? Is that how this is working?
Really, basically, we're just, we're just doing, it's a line item veto that you just, line item vetoing or overriding on the five that we had. So that's...
My understanding is that you're looking to either sustain, I mean, sustain with five or less votes, or override with six. So I think the motion that Benega had made, the second, I don't know what...
The motion is to override the veto, and the veto is being on the five issues.
So a yes vote would be to override, and a no vote would be no.
But, but the title says a resolution adopting the budget.
Excuse me.
Yeah, it says, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say specifically to override. It just says a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nine.
And then I think what you do, Herman, is if you override the veto, it would be amended into the fiscal year then, that we'd vote on.
Well, if you override, I mean, the council adopted the budget with the amendment, and the mayor vetoed it, and so line itemed it out, you're looking to override that veto. So if you vote to override, you will have the budget as the council adopted it originally.
But then if we don't override, well, I guess the real question I have, to me, it looks like we're still dealing with the resolution to adopt the budget, which is part, you know, the amendment, I mean, the veto is part of that. But I guess, since we're, well, to me, we are adopting this resolution for the budget. It's not just an override.
I think the motion by Councilmember Benega was to override the veto. I think that's the motion on the table.
Yeah, but the title, what we have here, talks about a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nine. I know from what I have in front of me here, it means that we could amend the resolution adopting the budget. This is another opportunity for us to amend the resolution.
I think what we have here says, I herewith return Resolution Number zero-one-five-five dash oh-eight, together with attached amendment entitled A Resolution Accepted Budget Fiscal Year, December thirty-first, two thousand and nine, and I invoke the power of the mayor pursuant to Chapter Provision three oh-four, allowing veto of individual appropriations items in the budget. I think that's what we'd be doing on this one.
Because, once again, the only thing that's in front of me, the only thing I'm reading is this title here.
Yeah.
And it says a resolution adopting, so to me, that means I could introduce an amendment to the resolution. And so I move to delete twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars from the southeastern behavioral request, and then to add the twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars to the groups that lost their funding. That's my motion to amend.
I thought you just said you were just on the veto. My understanding is all you have, all we have authority for here is the veto.
But once again, what's, what we, but what we have here in front, I mean, this is what I have in front of me, it just says this resolution adopting the budget. And now, I thought actually I was going to have something saying, you know, a resolution to override, amend the veto and so forth, but that's not what I have here.
My understanding is that you are voting on the override of the budget that was already adopted. So the budget has been adopted by the council on the fifteenth, on the twenty, fifteenth, on the fifteenth. And so therefore, you're simply voting on that. Now, the council will appropriate the funds for that on the sixth. I mean, that may be a different opportunity, I don't know, but this, I believe, is the motion on the table is the motion to override. So I guess I could defer with the city attorney, but my understanding is it's simply on the override.
Say what?
No, that's, that's all that we're voting on is the veto itself. I mean, that's, that's all we...
Yeah.
That's all we're voting on.
I will say on the agenda, I don't know. Yeah, if you look above the title, it says reconsideration of a veto.
Right, yeah, I see that. But I see the title below that talking about, yeah. I wish I could have had, you know, Dave, what you have there, because we don't, I don't actually have what you have.
Well, I'm just, I'm just reading off, Councilmember, I'm just reading off of the budget, the veto message that I have here. I can, I can slide that down to you here, if you want me to. This is just, this is...
Yeah, I mean, this is the veto message, but...
Go ahead, Gerald.
I'd just like to respond to Vernon's comments, and I certainly respect his opinion. But I think that if he wants to change the process, or if he wants to change what we've done over the last few years, many, many years, and include those eighty-four percent, wants to change the goals and objectives of the, and the criteria of the mayor and of the city council that meets those applications, then we should, we should reconsider it. But to do that after the request has been put in, and the criteria has been set, and our goals and objectives have been set, I think is incorrect. I certainly would welcome that kind of alternative conversation in the future, but I think right now, history will tell us what our goals have been and what our objectives have been, and we should stick to that until we change it.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I ask a question of Debra?
Yeah.
Now, if we actually do veto this, or override this veto, what's the next step? And how do we appropriate the money?
Well, once, if the council by a vote of six overrides the veto, then the budget stands as it was adopted on the fifteenth. The appropriation actually comes by an ordinance, and this is a resolution. So you've done the first reading on September fifteenth. The second reading to appropriate the entire budget will be on October sixth, which is next Monday.
Okay, and at that time, we can amend how we want to appropriate those dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, actually, that, I mean, that is the appropriation ordinance, so...
At that time, I think you can, can't you, Gene?
So far with the budget process, what you've done is you've adopted two resolutions, one for the capital improvement program and one for the general operating budget of the city. There's a third step, which is the actual appropriation of funds, so that you can spend it. At this point, there's no authorization to spend anything for oh-nine, and that will come up on the sixth as a second reading, and it would be appropriate to offer amendments at that point.
Thank you. Okay, so, further questions or comments? Not, we've got a motion, the motion before us is to override the veto. So if you vote yes, you override the veto, and the money is then, is, it's in the, it'll be in the budget. If you vote no to sustain the veto, then that the programs are not funded. So does that make clarity to everybody?
Yeah.
But I mean, but if you override the veto, the program's going to get funded. If you don't, they don't. So override the veto, they get funded, sustain it doesn't. So everybody understands, everybody understands, all in favor of the motion to override the veto, will vote yes, opposed, no?
Councilmember Benega?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Costello?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Knudsen?
No.
Litt?
Yes.
Staggers?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Five-three, the veto is sustained.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say something. Next Monday, we will have the, we'll appropriate the money, and at that time, I think it's quite possible, we will have an amendment here to try to get this back in, and then maybe delete some other money here from some of these other organizations.
No further business, a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Let's move, second.
I second the motion. Knudsen?
All in favor, yes, opposed, no?
Council, excuse me, Councilmembers Benega?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Litt?